I'm sorry, I can't assist with that request.
But if you would like to contact us, we can contact you.
We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you. We will do our best to help you.
Good morning, everyone. It is 10:00 AM, Friday, May 22, 2020. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one nation, under God, one individual. Okay, any person make sure to record at this time if anyone was not on the agenda. Anybody, any public speakers?
Judge. Judge, this is Sheriff Boy.
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name?
Yes.
Who, uh? Three minutes?
Yeah. Two. We're just kidding. Sheriff, we'll be right with you, Sheriff.
Sure. Thank you. Glad to be here to share some information. For those who don't know my name, it's Larry Gonzalez of the Texas Department of Public Defense. I want to come and give you guys a little bit about what we're doing, what's going on in Allison, Jimbo County with regards to developing growth in the city. I'm here to report to you that there is activity in Jimbo County now. There are people that are actually calling and wanting to come to Allison, Jimbo. I've actually been entertaining several things and several projects in reference to the Governor's Office on multiple jobs that want to come to Allison, Jimbo County. Companies that were on the Commission's Board way back when, they initiated a process that's actually been in progress that we're actually looking at as far as incentive. And one of the companies that does one fell there, wanted to visit with depositing budget sets because of negotiations in there, and that's one of the open to the next meeting, of creating about 50 new jobs here in town. Those small manufacturing companies that are interested in counting, so I have been in the process of negotiating, working with them on what even is that we can do to bring them here. So, that company plus several other companies that were working, and I was just trying to have some conversations in reference to several things that we're trying to anticipate that might be of the benefit for the community, for the county as well. So, I just wanted to share with you what we're doing. I'm also working really closely because of COVID-19, some of our regional partners in our coastal area, and when I say regional partners, I'm talking about San Pat, you know, Big Town, East Bay, and Corpus Christi here, but Corpus Christi you keep it up in the regional direction. Some people are out there, they're spending more hours, having gotten together, and wrapped ourselves around different projects, they could be shovel ready when some available money comes down. We all know that. Monies are being made available, but if you're not ready for the monies, then they put them out there before you know the money's gone. So, we're working with the regional people, I'm a colleague on the crowd committee, which we're also working on, plus the Regional Economic Development Committee, and working with people like the San Pat that have all these companies, the companies that I know you see, Steel Dynamics that has actually overdone since the $2 billion project, actually there's a $700 million project that are going on in that area. We feel that we can capitalize on some of those jobs and provide some of our workforce and some of our people that graduated from their schools to be eligible for those jobs. So, we're looking at different types of educational systems, different types of training, so that we can send the people that work for us here, or that have jobs, that don't have jobs anymore, be able to train them, put them in those jobs. We think that that's the future. You know, we also complain about how it's been really difficult for us in the oil field. Well, in order for us to do that, we need to diversify, and in order to diversify, we need to retrain some of our employees, some of our workforce. So, we're constantly looking at different aspects, different types of higher level education training for different colleges and different aspects to be able to be part of those courses, to be able to train some of the people that we need to sell. Here, more importantly, is some things that are coming up, that I think there will be partnerships that we can build, and I will live with you at a more brief summary, looking at different scopes of work, and how we can make Jimbo County, look, Jimbo County out on the map and say, we're open for business here, we want to be able to come over and know what facilities we've got, what facilities we've got, we've got a rail, there's two major highways. There's a lot of places for our county and for our city that we think we can capitalize. So, we're working on this project, and future data will give you more information, I can share that I think will be vital for us and everything that's to step forward, but today just wanted to come and visit with you, share what we've been working on.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate you coming in, Eric.
You're welcome. Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Thank you very much. I just want to let you know that we have 67 inmates, five female inmates. Wanted to let you know that our administrators' results on the COVID-19 testing are negative. I want to let you know about that. Also, Chief Ron Davis just left my office. He has delivered the signed agreement by his office and the approval of the council on our inter-local agreement that we are going to be putting in place. I have signed it this morning. I will send it to your office, Judge, for signatures, but we do agree to the information that we have in place. They will fall under our direction as an interdict program by some of our officers that are on that program. Wanted to also let you know that no Commissioner Wicho Gonzalez is working out there at the substation, getting his offices ready, and they've done a great job over there. Other than that, Judge, that's all we've got for this department. We also had a currency case last week.
There's a lot of places for our county and for our city that we think we can capitalize. So we're working on this project. At future date, I'll bring you more information that I can share that I think will be vital for us and everything that's stepped forward. But today, just to give you a little bit of insight, we're gonna share what we've been working on.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate you coming in, Eric.
You're welcome. Sheriff.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Thank you very much for. I just want to let you know that we have sixty-seven inmates, five female inmates. Wanted to let you know that our administrators' results on the COVID-nineteen testing back negative, uh, want to let you know about that. Also, uh, Chief Ron Davis just left my office. Uh, he has delivered the signed agreement by his office and the approval of the, uh, council on our inter-local agreement that we are going to be putting in place. I have signed it this morning. I will send it to your office, Judge, for signatures. Uh, but we do agree to, uh, the information that we have in place, they will fall under our direction as a interdiction program by some of our officers that are on that program. Wanted to also let you know that, uh, no Commissioner, which Gonzalez, working out there at the substation, getting the, his offices, and they've done a great job over there. Uh, other than that, Judge, that's all we've got for this, uh, for this department. We also had a currency case last week, fifty-two thousand dollars. Uh, we're still working on the interdiction programs, on Highway thirty-one, still having negotiations with different sheriffs in the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Anyone else? Anybody else like to speak at this time? Okay, adjourned item number four, consider me approving minutes from previous meeting. Okay, motion second, all those favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Adjourned item number five, consideration of the offer to purchase tax sale property suit number thirteen oh five sixteen oh four nine B, Jimwells County, Alton, in the School District, and Buscanti Groundwater Conservation District versus Sam Martin Smith. Hmm. So this purchase is the offer to purchase tax sale property suit number thirteen oh five sixteen oh nine forty-nine Jimwells County. Account number one two two one zero zero two five zero 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 zero, lot sixty-eight, our ranch subdivision, unit number three, a subdivision in Jimwells County, Texas, according to the map. Or platte of, according to volume six, page fifty-four, map records of Jimwells County, Texas. And there's been an offer of one thousand five hundred dollars made by Mr. Edward Solano. Can you finish? Straight? I have a motion to second, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Number six, consideration and approval of offer to purchase tax sale property suit number zero nine zero six one four eight one six B, Orange Grove and Bennett School District, in Jimwells County versus Pacific Land Exchange. Okay, and that one, there's been an offer made by Miss Leah Lozama, uh, Swatton Community, of an offer of three thousand six hundred dollars in this particular description. Motion the second, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, motion passes. Number seven, consider approval of fund request from Westside Youth Center and Boys and Girls Club to take, to be taken for the fund fifty, at an amount approved by Commissioners Court. We have a request by the youth center in the amount of, what, fifteen thousand dollars? And then we have a, a request. I don't think there's nothing out here yet. Okay, and did we accept the, the amount from you? Okay, okay, Commissioners, so what are we gonna do here? Okay, Mr. Rick. Yes, sir. How much, how much were you, were you, did we give you last time? Fifteen, that was your seat, didn't it? Yeah, okay. Good to go. So we're gonna do a little presentation? Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, you're all good, great job. But I remember, Rick, when you were six foot tall, I used to look, we used to look up to you.
And it was funny to see when we would take pictures in the paper, I'd be going over the tire, everybody tied, everyone that tied. But, uh, no, we, we, uh, we thank you for, for your continued support, and we continue to carry on, we just, uh, in the amount of fifteen thousand. For Smart Move Program, which is the national exchange program by Boys and Girls of America, hundreds and hundreds of boys and girls that, uh, use this, uh, national exchange program. It starts March, and in the handout, I have the kind of, uh, the, uh, the logistics and the time tables, the different topics that, uh, that we, that we use in the case, uh, the times and the dates to the year. The following day, we also have the proposal, uh, for, for the, for the budget of fifteen thousand. And then after that, I have a couple of, uh, kind receipts that we, that the, the kids, uh, that the kids are using. One of them, you know, talking about the political thing about the fall and health, and getting about road bodies, first season, myself, if any, problems, problems. And then the final sheet, I have the, uh, uh, the expenses throughout the year. And so when I, I, uh, I have the asking questions, I want you to take the pass. Uh, I just want to comment that this is very good, because one thing we ask for from when we give off the money to town, is, and we want to know what the money being sent for. So this is very useful to what we need as to how money being sent for.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Really, thank you very much, it's a little, it's a good time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, well, then I guess we can accept the, uh, requests for fifteen thousand each of each entity.
Yeah, well, yes, yes, we can. Uh, under the Code of Criminal Procedures, they both qualify under fifty, the chapter fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, yes, sir.
They, uh, they both turned in their letters of, uh, requests. They, uh, they turned in their statement of, uh, financial statement from last year, spend, and, uh, they, they both qualify. They're both requesting fifteen thousand dollars. So it's up to the Commissioners Court to allocate the money at the amount that we request. So we can discuss it or whatever.
And the money is available now.
Yes, the money's.
We have a healthy, uh, budget this year, uh, and, uh, you know, the, uh, the COVID-nineteen has hit everybody real hard. And it's hindered the Boys, Boys, uh, Boys and Girls Club and Westside Youth Center, the ability to raise funds. And they're gonna start at fifty percent here in the next couple of weeks. And, uh, I think it's very important for us to support this, this, uh, piece to play.
And the money is available.
The money is available, and we're still gonna have a pretty good fund balance, and, uh, you know, I think, I don't know. It's especially the Commissioners Court to approve the, the amount.
Okay, wait, you made a motion?
Weren't you?
Weren't you? Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff, for outlining that, yeah. That's important that, that we keep that in mind, and wherever they request these funds, that, that's in good areas, it's going to, so. I'm sure there's a lot more folks, but I'm sure these kids and this youth will have those places at least for now.
Yeah, the, the main thing with our fund, you know, we, we have to protect ourselves, and we also have to protect the public.
Yeah.
And we, we can reach better on money.
Yeah.
So that's, 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 uh, that's a big thing.
One of the greatest assets is that it's for the kids, and it's anti-drone, and it's keeping the kids off the streets, and being able to.
Some kids off the streets.
You know, my old neighbor, when I grew up in there, it's always, it's, they're all, they're all appreciative.
Yeah, no, it's tight. Well, not only that, but the fact that they can be able to participate. For a long time, they've been holed up and, uh, you know. Let's see when they start, you know, it's, I bet you for, hopefully, no, it'll all be good.
And another thing is that the money is available on June, June the first.
June first, okay, that's good.
That's, uh, that's when we do our allocation.
It's gonna be okay, as long as we get approval from the Defense Office for each one.
Thank you.
So, uh, the, the proceed, the policy is, uh, in June, so, yeah, that's what it is.
All right, so basically, um, okay, that's approved, so we're gonna move on to number eight. This is another one to see. Description, consider contribution request from Alice, Alice Youth Center, for five thousand dollars to be used for upgrades and repairs to the youth center facility. Yes, ma'am? Okay, yes, yes.
But, uh, it's basically for upgrade, the outdated computers that we got maybe from six years ago, uh, outdated lighting out there, the face dead, you know, things like that. So, um, I think that, um, additional five thousand would, you know, bring that.
From the same funds that we're looking at, or you're looking at asking with the?
I was asking for, uh, sheriff from the drug court.
You, you, you're, so you're requesting funds from the Sheriff's Department? Okay, so you don't have to request it to us?
Well, I just thought that it's.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's just, it's, it's just a presentation, I guess.
So that's basically, you know, what he's leaving out there, and, you know, things are outdated, and, and I believe that he's gonna start like maybe like two weeks later than when he starts. And it'll probably be these five, ten children at a time, like, uh, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and then, you know, on Thursday, and, and Tuesday, and Thursday would be, you know, different children, and, you know, so, and I would be sort of raising my business.
For the record, Miss Cindy Leos, sorry, uh, Democratic Chair-elect.
And Vice President.
Vice President of the Westside Youth Center.
My question.
Yes, sir.
And for the record, I just wanna, uh, make it clear that this is gonna be for drug programs into the age of children in the area, the money is given for, for a kind of.
Yes, and, and, and because I, I'm very passionate about it, you know, I've been working with him for many, many years, and, you know, it's basically a structured testing community. And, and it's, it's a shame, but, uh, it is what it is, and, um, I believe that Romano has done an excellent job with, a lot of those children live up to enough as fathers do. That they don't have fathers, or, you know, something broken homes, and, and that's where they go and eat, that's where they go and, you know.
That's their place to go, and their refuge, safe refuge.
Yes.
I know we go there a lot, and it's good for the kids to go there, to have somewhere to go.
Yes.
That the people show up.
Just a question, how do you all plan to open, you know, it's like, uh, you're gonna open at fifty percent, uh?
Well, like I said, uh.
You don't, you don't have a plan, yes?
Well, no, he says that, he, what he wants to do is like, uh, Monday, like ten children per day.
Okay.
That's how he's gonna do it. So if you came on Monday, then we got a bit, uh, other chance, you know, come on.
So you don't have a plan, you know?
Yes, yes. You know, because, uh, we can't have modern chance, we'd be setting, you know, they, you know, they touch everything, and they go everywhere, and, you know, so, um, those are our precautions.
Okay, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Cindy.
It's a presentation that, uh, really doesn't, it's, uh. Yeah, well, it was, it was kinda addressed to us, so, which is making it clear that it's a presentation, and, and the funding will come from another source.
Yes.
And I guess you could follow up, and we'll, like I said, normally that works out real good, the sheriff's been real good about, uh, helping, and then I think he just comes before us and makes sure everything is, you know. Like, in order, I think he just does that.
And that's why I'm making sure the monies, the funds are, having to do with, uh.
Drive prevention, all right.
Prevention, and then, yeah, so the funds.
Right, okay, great, uh, Commissioner?
Uh, actually, Romano basically made it out of whatever, you know, goes in there, and then, uh, I don't know, I haven't really discussed on the food program, because usually, you know, we have this whole basic food, you know, for the children. I don't know yet if where we're asking, you know, that, so it will probably be asking that we know that.
You know, there's, uh, if I tell Mr. Romano that, uh, goes on a bit, you know, there's deadlines to our procedures. You know, May first is a deadline. We're making an exception actually because, that was a COVID, but we believe that deadlines need to be, and you can request it in December, January, February, you need to have plenty of time to request. But meet the deadlines and, and show up with, with a plan, and also expenditures from the previous year.
Right.
And, and, and if you have already placed, it makes it a lot easier for us.
Yeah, that, well, that's essential, and, uh, I, I know that he was like, he, he's been real scared about all of this, so he hasn't really gone anywhere, and then I just, I was busy myself, so he.
We're in different time zones, so I'm just kinda, just pointing it out.
But thank you, Miss Cindy, for the presentation and the request, and it's a good cause, and, uh, we're always supportive, that's why we allowed you to. Yes.
No action.
I had a, I just had a question because I, I couldn't hear very clearly. Do I understand this, this is actually gonna be paid out of a different fund, not out of our, our fund?
Correct, the sheriff.
Of the sheriff, okay. Yeah, because this fund that we have is, is, um, is guided by, uh, chapter fifty-nine point oh six, section H, and we can only, you know, we can't really spend on facilities or equipment. I could, if, if I could share the, let me see if this will work. No, it doesn't, it doesn't let me, I was gonna share the. What's that?
That's how come we're not taking any action on this line item? We're considering, uh, uh, no action on this line item.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Cindy. I'm sure the sheriff's aware now, you wouldn't worry about.
No, no, he's.
Thank you, Sheriff. Let's see, who else are we right here? Youth Center, Consider Approve Number Nine, um, Consider and Approve Emergency Management Coordinator, Mark Williams', recommendation to lift burn ban. I don't think he certainly has.
The numbers are all there, huh?
Have you recommended everything, despite everything? We're in the clear for now, hopefully, until it gets, so.
Maybe get some more rain as we can.
So, uh.
Actually, actually, uh, it's, uh, it looks pretty good, you know, and, uh, our index is, uh, is three ninety-four, and we're under the five hundred, uh, index, you know. Uh, and the recognition is by, uh, Mr. LaCuna.
Also, if I can, I must be. Okay, I have a motion, um, I'd like to say also that right now, we need to lift it, take advantage of it, move on it before it gets dryer any faster, any quicker, and then we lose that little, uh, window.
Be cautious.
And, uh, yeah, everybody's gotta be cautious, of course, and most of them are controlled pretty good about doing what they do, and then, uh, I'm sure it'll be a big load up, uh, I'm sure there's hours over here every day, thank you.
Yeah, I, I tell them, you're gonna burn a lot of grass all the time.
Yeah, just to be aware that there's a burn going on, right?
And actually, there's a lot of people that have been calling, you know, it's everything, you know, so.
Yeah, I get paid about ten each spring and September, so that's good, that's good, we'll lift it for now, uh, I don't think there's any other, uh, people just need to be responsible with their firework, uh, displays, and when they start doing that stuff.
Another thing is, uh, they need to call fire departments, church departments, whoever.
Yeah.
Judge, can I comment on that? We got a, we got a question on the fireworks. Memorial Day, uh, weekend is a, is one of the, uh, holidays that requires affirmative action by the Commissioners Court by May fifteenth in order to authorize it. So, um, you know, since we didn't get this burn ban recommendation afterwards, it's too late to do it now, so, uh, legally, we cannot authorize fireworks sale for Memorial Day.
We can't authorize fireworks sales for Memorial Day.
You know, we didn't, we didn't take any action, you know, last month, so it's too late to take any action.
Michael, and when do we have to take the action for the July fourth?
Okay, July fourth is different. July fourth and New Year's are different. Those are automatic unless you ban them.
Oh.
Okay, those are, those are automatically, those two holidays are automatic unless we are in a drought condition, and the Commissioners Court says, you know what, we're, we're in a, uh, in a drought condition, so we, we're gonna prohibit the fireworks, uh, during July fourth or, or, uh, New Year's. The other holidays, like Texas Independence Day, um, San Jacinto Day, Cinco de Mayo, Memorial Day, those four holidays require affirmative action by the Commissioners Court, on or before a certain date before that holiday. In this case, the deadline was May fifteenth, and so we didn't, you know, we, we didn't get the rain, I think right about, it, it might have been the day, that day, or the day after when we got all the rains. So it was too late to take action for Memorial Day. So, um, legally, we, we cannot authorize, uh, fireworks sales in Jimwells County for the Memorial Day holiday.
If we don't take any action, this gets going on.
Okay, sounds good, Mike, thank you, Michael.
We can't, of course, you, you can lift the burn ban, I mean, that's not, that, I'm not saying that, this, what I'm, what I'm saying is only pertains to fireworks.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to lift the burn ban, but, uh, second, all those in favor say aye? And all those opposed?
Oh, you got a question?
Motion passes. We turn then. Okay, so hopefully, uh, we put it out there, and Commissioner, so it'll get out there that we can, uh, it's effective as of right now, so.
Actually, I have to make a few phone calls, because they're making calls.
Yeah. Well, that'll be, like I said before, hopefully, we'll keep it, this moisture will last a little while, and then hopefully, we'll. I agree, I hope so. I don't even believe the forecast, but if it gets here, we get here, and it goes off to the, to the east end, that's where. Okay, um, the net, burn ban is lifted as of now, okay. Uh, adjourned item number ten, Consider and Approve Budget Amendment Request by County Judge Rodriguez, Juan Rodriguez Jr., to transfer five thousand from line item four four oh nine for fifty repairs and maintenance. Labor project to line item four four oh nine five seventy-three, equipment and six hundred and ten dollars. Uh, agenda number ten, Consider Approved Budget Amendment Request by County Judge Valerius, Juan Valerius Junior, to transfer five thousand from line item twelve four oh nine for fifty repairs and maintenance, levy projects to line item twelve four oh nine five seventy-three equipment, and six hundred and ten dollars from line item twelve five ten three ninety, to miscellaneous supplies to line item twelve five ten five seventy-five furniture and fixtures.
Just before I look at the request, and then please, fine.
I make a motion.
That's fair.
I have a motion, second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Agenda item number eleven, Consider Approved County Treasurer's Report and Other Monthly Reports.
Make a motion for proof.
I have a motion in a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number twelve, Consider Approved County Auditor's Report.
Judge, Commissioner's Court, the first one I'm gonna go over is the self-tax one three four, for the monthly, you know, thirty twenty. On the first thing, you will see, you know. We have collected, it's a demo revenue, we have collected thirty-three point four seven percent of our forecast budget for the self-tax revenue, uh, the same thing with all of the different, uh, R and Bs. So, right now, we collect a thirty-three point four seven percent of the self-tax. If you look at the next page, you'll see that compared to last year, uh, we have collected less money, there's a total of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and forty-six fifteen compared to last year, but we are on pace with what we forecasted for this year, thirty-three. The next one is going to be, is the, uh, Congress's monthly report. On the revenue.
We have a shortfall of ninety-one thousand on the self-tax.
No, this, this ninety-one thousand less is compared to from that year.
It's last year.
To that year, but in comparison to what we forecasted this year, we're right on it, at thirty-three point four seven, which would be a thirty-three percent. On, on the revenues, um, the general fund, right now, we have actually, uh, with our budget of sixteen million seven hundred and twenty-five twenty-three, we have actually collected twelve million nine hundred and thirty-eight eight fifty-nine eight, worth seventy-seven percent. Um, with the R and Bs and all other funds, all revenues, we have collected seventy-five percent for the year. On the expenditures, um, like I said, at this point, we're supposed to get thirty percent, and your department's always around it, uh, will get together, usually, within, address as to why, where that comes, uh, maybe a couple of them have to be paid ahead of time, um, as you can see, all, everybody's different, uh, percentage. When you come down to the general fund, at this point, we are at thirty percent expenditure for the year, through April. This is Golden Bridge, they're at twenty-seven percent, everybody else, with everybody together, we're at thirty percent expenditure for everybody, like I say, we should be thirty, to be a thirty-two percent, that's our, uh, projection for, for April, so that's a three percent possibility for the year. Nice.
Thank you. Anybody else, uh, question, thank you? I move that we approve this, uh, County Auditor's Report, and I have a motion on the floor, yeah? You second it?
Aye.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed, motion passes, thank you, no. And Agenda number thirteen, Consider Approved Payroll and Bill is submitted by County Auditor. I move that we approve this, uh, third one, submitted, I have a second on the floor, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all those opposed, motion passes.
And with the, with that, I think.
The exception of funds fifty-two, fifty-four?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, no, that's, that's whole. Good, so now, before we, I just wanna make a few announcements, I just wanna encourage and announce that the census is still ongoing, and we wanna encourage everybody, and we're saying other member employees and everyone, that way we can just encourage and remind our families, supporters, employees, of the ongoing census, and to make sure that we don't miss that, uh, that application and registration, and make sure we are all counted. That's something that, that I wanted to make sure we stress, but we'll put some more announcements regarding the census, that's gonna be real important, too, we don't wanna miss, we don't wanna, every, every person, everybody is, is money left on the table for our region, every single one of them, and it just, there's no.
And I just wanna, I just wanna comment that, uh, your office is a fight for the care.
Oh, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna go there, yeah, that was good to.
And you set up the bank accounts already, and everything.
You did all that already, good, 'cause we should.
And that's with the ledger, and I set up the accounts already, so we're gonna separate it, put that money, you know, specifically.
For that.
And that way, in time of order, and we have to, you know, separate it, so.
And that's good, we'll do that, and we'll put that out there, thank you, you know, we, we, I submitted for that CARES Act, we did all that, we got everything in order, and I was gonna get with you anyway, but I think then, then everybody was, I'm glad you created that account, that way we can keep record and, and, uh, itemize earmarkable, that'll be good for the overall county. So that was good with the CARES Act, what else did we do? We had one more positive taste tested and out, and I know that they put it out, I always keep in touch with the media, but, and a lot of that is sometimes travel related, or come, people's coming in from out of our, you know, region, and out of our county, that we don't have any control over. But all of them, every single one of them, have always been, uh, um, and we make sure that they're quarantined, and, and they isolate themselves, and so far, so good, we've, we've had everybody cooperate, if not, one person has reinfected anybody else, so everyone has recovered for the most part. We got one there still that's, you know, lingering, but they're isolated and quarantined, so, so far, so good, everybody's been, uh, practicing their distance, and obviously, not congregating, so that's the most important than anything else. And, uh, so we mentioned that, no, there's the CARES Act, and what else, so census, and that's all I wanted to do, we'll do a little press release later on, and give a, a, uh, detailed report as far as all the cases we've had, the recoveries, and what plans, uh, from this, from this time forward, what we're expecting, and then more, we submitted for more regi, for more, uh, testing by the state's, uh, testers, and, and the groups that do that, they're circulating around the state, and so, obviously, the labs are backed up where they test and get the results, so that takes a little while. So, other than that, Commissioner, is there anything else before we adjourn in the meeting? Nope. Okay, so I moved over you during this meeting. And I checked, and all those in favor say aye? This meeting is adjourned, thank you, thank you, no.
Thank you.